Are we ready?
Ask Mr. Wood to count you in.
Mr. Wood, would you mind counting us in?
Unless we're live. We've been live? No, it still says this slide.
For these, I actually don't count you in in-person meetings. You can go ahead and start. I'm paying attention to what you're doing.
Okay.
Okay, the Planning Commission meeting is called to order. Okay, let me write a script. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 3 meeting of the Arlington County Planning Commission. I am commission chair, vice-chair, Devanji Patel. I would like to share a few logistical points for those members or commissioners participating remotely tonight. Tonight's meeting is available as a broadcast with closed captioning on Comcast Xfinity Channels 25 and 1085, Verizon FiOS Channels 39 and 40, and the county website. Audio of tonight's meeting is available via telephone. If commissioners and presenters or speakers lose internet connectivity during tonight's meeting, please reconnect with us by phone. I understand that you can use the number provided in the team's invite. And registered speakers have received Ms. Johnson's telephone number in their speaker registration confirmation. For other presenters and speakers joining us through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and devices muted until you are called upon. Please turn off sound to any other devices around you to minimize interference. Please keep your cameras off until the clerk calls upon you to speak. When called upon to speak, you must unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that is located on your meeting command bar. The moderator does not have the ability to unmute you. Once you have spoken, please turn your cameras off. If you are dialing in by phone, please press star six to unmute. Public speakers, you will be called upon by the clerk at an assigned time. Pre-registration to speak at tonight's meeting was required. We are not able to accommodate additional speakers. Public comment will take place within the same timeframes as we would provide at an in-person meeting. Speakers will have three minutes to comment as individuals and five minutes to speak if representing an organization. A speaking timer will be displayed on screen by the clerk. If you are dialing in by phone and unable to see the screen, we will provide an audible warning when 30 seconds are remaining. You will be muted when your time has concluded. The meeting chat is active for presenters or commissioners who need technical assistance only. Please do not use the meeting chat for discussion, public comment, questions about agenda items, or requests for more information. All public comment must be shared verbally for the record during the assigned public testimony period. Lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county website. All information associated with tonight's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act requirements. I will note for the record that Commissioner Geren is joining us remotely due to medical reasons. And Commissioner Steinberger will be either joining us in person late or participating virtually also for medical reasons. And with that, Madam Clerk, may I turn it over to you?
Okay. Our first item for the evening is Vision Zero Multi-Model Safety Engineering Toolbox. This is an informational item. And we have Daniel Neighbors, thank you. We have Daniel Neighbors, our DES staff, to present this item to us. Thank you.
Can everybody hear me? Let me give you one moment to put the presentation.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I'm going to share the presentation here really quickly. Apologize for the delay, the technical difficulties.
Could you bring the mic a little closer, please?
Yes, is that better?
A little bit more, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, commissioners. Today, I'm here to talk about the toolbox that we've developed. DS has developed through Vision Zero. And it's a multimodal engineering toolbox.
Do you mind pushing the mic up a little bit? For some reason, I'm still not.
Okay, is that better?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, great. So again, I'm here to present about the multimodal safety engineering toolbox developed in DES as part of our Vision Zero initiative. The agenda that I'm going to go through today is listed on the screen right here. Basically, I'm going to talk about the toolbox objectives, talk about our public engagement that we conducted, how we incorporated the feedback that we had through engagement, the timeline for the toolbox.
Mr. Neighbors, we can't actually see anything, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay. It shows that I'm sharing. Let me try one more time. Yep, it shows that I was sharing. Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. This will get going here, I promise. Okay, we're in business now. So I'll save some time then for questions and answers. So basically, the engineering toolbox is something that was identified through our Vision Zero Action Plan as one of those items that we would create. The objectives of the toolbox are to inform stakeholders about ways that we can improve safety on the streets, how we can communicate those tools to an audience in an easy-to-understand format, how we can use these tools to facilitate amongst staff and our different contractors that are working through us, developers, et cetera, and then create a shared understanding and expectations around safety treatments. If you all remember our Vision Zero Action Plan, one of the objectives is to eliminate all fatalities and serious injuries by the year 2030. So this toolbox is supporting that objective of eliminating the injuries and fatalities on our transportation network. In essence, this toolbox serves as a document that gives us the charge to, for all of us to work towards ways that we can improve safety. So we conducted public engagement. You can see in three different forms right here. We did an online form earlier this year that was up for a month, and we collected 22 responses through that. We had a virtual meeting on February 1 where we had 17 participants and a very lively discussion. And then we had finally emails to staff. There was three of those. So we took all that information and consolidated it to understand what people thought about the first draft toolbox that we created. And here are some of the categories of feedback that we got. The first is the content and usefulness of the document, of the draft document. So the toolbox scored a seven out of 10 on ease of understanding. There were mixed responses about the level of detail for each tool. Some wanted more detail and others wanted less. But one suggestion was adding key information in the list of tools so that they could compare them more easily side by side. And that is one of the big things that we did from the feedback. And that's what I'll talk about in more detail later when I conclude the presentation. The respondents also said that they really cared and were more concerned about the safety benefits and the potential crash reduction for each of the tools. And you can see the bars on the right side of the screen just show what types of information were most interest to people that provided feedback. So the second item we collected feedback on was the format of the toolkit and the visuals. Most people did find that the format was clear. About 50% of the respondents thought that they were effective. And about 50% thought that videos and animations would be more effective. Again, that's something that we could look at in the future. But right now, this is a static toolbox. Other suggestions for improving the visuals included better images, maps showing where the tools were deployed, and a cost-benefit chart. And we did those in different degrees. So the final area where we asked for feedback was feature use and promotion. And in general, the public thought that the toolbox would be a good tool to advocate for safety measures. The public also provided feedback on how that should be promoted. And it was pretty evenly split between the county website, county emails, and social media. And then this category of 27%, you can see in blue right here, which we called other responses, were attending community meetings, pop-ups, and using all the methods listed above. Oops, sorry, skipped that. So in essence, this is what we did to incorporate the feedback. We adjusted the tools, what we say disaggregated them, so that the purpose of each of the tools were clear. For example, we had some tools that were pretty broad in scope. Some of them were like markings and signs. And people wanted to know more specifically what types of signs and markings were there. So we disaggregated that into several categories so it was clear. We provided consistent illustrative graphics because we heard also that the graphics were very important in understanding what the tool actually was. We identified plans to evaluate the efficacy of some of the tools over time, those that are kind of more in the pilot phase. So that's conducting before and after studies, which we'll do on some of those tools. We rearranged the sections so that the toolbox made sense. We created this easily digestible executive summary, which I'll show you in more detail. And then the last few things is we reviewed the language so that it was easier to understand, checked for quality, and created a glossary so that the definitions were clear when people read the toolbox. So now we're going to get into the meat of what changes we made through the toolbox. So you can see the column on the left shows the kind of broad categories of where the tools fit. The middle column shows the tools that, as they were originally in the draft document. And then on the right, you can see the tools that we added or changed. So you can see that there's two areas in crossings and signals that have been crossed out because we, what I say, is disaggregated those so that the intent and the function of those tools was clear. So signal, timing, and phasing became leading pedestrian interval, phasing modifications to signals, red light cameras, and traffic signals. And then signage and pavement markings became crossing signs and markings, you know, for crossing pedestrians and bicyclists. And then travel lane signs and markings for directing vehicles and bicyclists along the roadway. So again, the intent is to have tools that were easier to understand by name. For transit facilities, it stayed pretty much the same, but we added bus queue jump signals, which are basically a means that transit can bypass traffic and intersections, since that's a tool we added. In these last three categories, bicycle and pedestrian facilities, you can see that first original tool we disaggregated. And that was disaggregated into bike boxes and two-stage turn boxes. Excuse me. Buffered bike lanes and conventional bike lanes. And conventional bike lanes are the five to six feet wide bike lanes that don't have a buffer or separation from traffic. And then we added curb ramps and green markings. Green markings are usually used for bicycle lanes. For speed and traffic management, we added chicanes, which are basically deflection in the roadway that helps slow down vehicles, speed cameras, which have been adopted by the state in specific zones, in work zones and school zones, and then traffic circles. And finally, roadway design was pretty much the same. So the timeline, after we collected the feedback earlier this year, assessed how to improve the toolbox. In May, we had our big Vision Zero, the first-year annual meeting. And we described some of the things that we were working on, which were the additional tools that I described, went through very briefly, and a draft executive summary. Through June, we refined that executive summary. We revised the toolbox and then centered around different departments for internal review. In the summer involved, we continued, fall that we continued those revisions. And then we published the toolbox approximately a month ago. And right now, you're the second commission that we are updating on the toolbox. In the future, again, like I kind of alluded to, we would use this toolbox for internal and external education to show what tools are available to us to improve safety. We will continue to accept and collect community feedback. And we will make updates to the toolbox as necessary. This is a living document where it's intended to be updated as we see tools that can help us with reaching our goals through Vision Zero. One of the things we get asked very often is how are we going to apply the tools in the toolbox? This is a brief summary of that process that we follow for any type of improvements. You can see on the left side of the screen, the four steps are laid out. First is we identify a location. Second is we do an analysis of that location. And then third, of course, is we select a tool. And then the fourth is implementation. So the graphic shows that process in a little bit more detail. That first step, location identification, can be seen in basically the far-left side of the graphic, where we can identify that through a data analysis, through a capital project or a development project, a site plan, through planning studies, and then through community feedback and requests. Once it's been identified, then we can analyze that location, moving to the right, that is, analyze the location for any data that we need to have a better understanding of the issue. And then we confirm that issue. The third step is select the appropriate tools based off of the data and our understanding of the issue. And then finally, that fourth step, moving across to the right, is implementation. And that could be something very short-term, like signage and marking projects. It could be by updating our policy and regulations. It could be by piloting a project that we're not really sure how effective it will be. So we'll do something that's low-cost and inexpensive and collect data to see if it's having the effect that we would like. Then we can do a quick-build project, which is a project of a short timeline, something that we can implement typically within a year. And of course, then there's a capital project. It can become a capital project which has a longer lead time. And that whole process kind of is an iterative process where we can collect and analyze data to see how effective it is. So a summary of the tools. Basically, we have 40 tools now in the toolbox. I did talk about the categories, those five categories that they're divided into. But each of the toolbox basically has a more detailed summary of each of the tools than I'm going to go through today. But I will take a high-level look at each of the tools by showing you the executive summary. And in that, you'll see that there's a few icons. One is a timeline that is separated into these three categories, short, medium, and long. And then costs, which is low, moderate, medium, high. Or the tools that are shown there, that indicates a tool that also requires a lot of maintenance. So now I'll take you through, very briefly, all the tools that we have in this first iteration of the toolbox. So there's two pages for crossings and signals. But as you can see, this is basically how do people get across the street? So if you're looking at the upper-left-hand corner, crossing signs and markings, these are things that can be done to enhance that bicyclist, pedestrians, other users are crossing the street. It's short timeline and also low cost typically. We also have travel lane signs and markings. These are things that help guide motorists, bicyclists, people that are using the roadway. Those, the timeline varies, could be short to medium. And the cost is still pretty low overall. Parking restrictions and crossings and daylighting, these are things that help. We can employ at intersections to help provide expectancy for pedestrians or cyclists when they're crossing a street so that motorists and pedestrian cyclists can see each other, that there's not something obstructing that ability for them to make visual contact. And you can see this has a actual expected crash reduction because this is just one specific tool, about a 30% reduction for pedestrian vehicle crashes, which is great. And you can see the timeline and cost varies. But again, they're typically not higher cost. Harden center lines and turn wedges also is something that we look to deploy. And we've done some already in the county. But these are things that help slow down turning vehicles when going over a crossing. It could be right or left-turning vehicles. But again, these are still pretty short-term and low cost. Going across the bottom of the screen, you see raised refuge islands. These are things that basically enable pedestrians to cross a street in two separate distinct movements, so they're only crossing one direction of travel at a time, a pretty good crash reduction of 69%. Protected intersections, this is something that we have yet to deploy fully. But we do have some site plans that will be developed, that will be providing protected intersections. And basically, these are intersections where you have protected bike lanes and you're carrying that protection through the intersection. Stop sign control, this is one of the newer things that we added. But again, we have this manual that guides when we deploy stop signs. And that's the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the MUTCD. And when we apply the stop sign using that methodology, then we see that there's a 22% of reduction in crashes. And finally, on this, rectangular rapid flashing beacons. These are those beacons you see that you can push and provides a yellow flash. We've deployed over the past few years numerous of these, near in the ballpark of 30 of these over the past three or four years. But those have about a 47% reduction in crashes for pedestrians, between pedestrians and vehicles. Okay, continuing with crossings and signals, a pedestrian hybrid beacon. You can see that is one of those beacons, again, when you push it, it provides that yellow flash, then a red signal that gets motorists to stop for pedestrians. And that has about a 55% crash reduction. That is, you can see, one of the more expensive items. Traffic signals, I think that they're self-explanatory. But when that is applied according to the MUTCD, we see about a 30% reduction in all crashes. And again, this is one of the most expensive items that we see in the toolkit. Traffic signal backplates, those are rather inexpensive. But these are something that can provide about a 15% reduction in crashes. Phasing modifications is basically, we can phase a signal to reduce conflicts between different movements often. And that will provide a 41% to 48% reduction when we're, excuse me, when we're talking about left-turn crashes. If we provide protected left-turn phasing, meaning left turns go without any other conflicting movement, that in itself provides a 41% to 48% crash reduction.
Mr. Neighbors, I just wanted to let you know you have about three minutes left for the presentation.
Oh, okay, thank you. There's other tools you can see here that provide benefits that you can see on the slide right here. I'll quickly note a few things about pedestrian and bicycle facilities. We did disaggregate those. So that you can see, going from the left side to the right side, you see an increased performance from safety, up to 74% reduction in crashes between bicyclists and vehicles for a separated facility. Continuation of that, I will just kind of briefly glance through some of those. Speed and traffic management, we have a lot of things we're doing in this area. And we see a lot of opportunity. One of the things that I did mention is chicanes and traffic circles. We do see speed reductions through that. And then finally, these other road designs, these are things too that we do see varying benefits. Modifications to corners, up to almost 50% reduction. And then for roadway reconfigurations, we see some great benefits too. So again, in conclusion, I see that, you know, we've gotten a lot of feedback on how we could use this outreach. I kind of mentioned- I kind of mentioned that very briefly. But this is a tool that we can all use to, through site development process, through different communication with the public, to help improve and to engage the community on these tools and how these tools can be deployed to help improve safety and reach our goals through Vision Zero. That concludes the presentation. Thank you for the notification that I was running over. If there is time for questions, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Neighbors. So the matter is, the informational matter is now with the commission. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Commissioner Hughes is trying to press his mic. So I've got Commissioner Hughes, Commissioner Bagley, and I've got Commissioner Stroll. And then Chair Weir.
Thanks, Commissioner Patel. I have two questions. The term chicane?
Chicanes, yes.
After spending a year trying to pronounce vunurf, they are presumably the same thing, correct?
No, they're not. I will briefly describe it. A chicane is basically where, and I'll go back to the graphic here, if you can see that, the chicane is basically where you put things in the roadway to cause motorists to not follow a straight path. Because in a straight path, people tend to drive faster. So if you can deflect that, meaning, you know, divert them from that straight path, then they will typically drive slower. And you can see that there's about a 3% to 9% speed reduction for a chicane. A vunurf is basically a street that has no control. They would be used on a slower roadway with kind of more of a mix where you see, like, bicyclists, pedestrians. But the whole intent of a vunurf is, you really don't provide any control, and it really, everybody just kind of works together. You know, they learn how to handle the street by mixing in a polite and effective way. But it's not in streets that are very high-volume.
Okay. All the pictures I saw had it look very similar to that chicane. So sorry, I spent a year trying to learn the word vunurf, so I really appreciate trying to do it. I want to make sure that. The only other thing I will say, the number-one question I get revolving around this entire concept is as follows. And I have just a question, does this help answer that question? Why can I, Stephen, not get a speed bump put on my street? And I have to explain to somebody that's pretty much over staff's cold body, will they install a new speed hump anywhere in Arlington? Their next response to me is, then why is it, Stephen, that when they remove them and repave the streets, they put them back in? And I can't answer that question. Does this help explain that to people? And have we done a good job communicating to our community that particularity? Because to most people, the simplest way to make things slow down and be safer is to make it really obnoxious to drive fast, pretty much make it painful for people. And so the number-one question I get from parents and people I know is that exact question. And I don't think that document really answers that question.
That's a good question, Commissioner Hughes. That is a long answer to that. But the toolkit is intended to help people understand what is feasible and appropriate for different roadways. So a speed hump isn't appropriate for every roadway type. It's also to help staff to work with the public to figure out how we deploy some of these tools that we may not have deployed very much in the past. So there's things that, you know, we need to work collectively on to try to figure out, you know, what's the best path forward. Speed humps may be one of these things that fit into that category. So really, the intent of the toolkit is to start conversations internally and externally to figure out how we can use these tools in an appropriate manner that helps people address safety needs on the roadway.
My only encouragement for staff, I know it's a living document, is consider whether you can answer that question. Because that is the number-one question I get revolving around anything about traffic management. And as I said, I've learned how to say vunurf in my time, and trust me, I did not know how to say it before. And so I'm very well aware of some of the many intricacies of traffic engineering, and I've read several mini-papers on the subject now. But that's the question we always get to the heart of. And because they exist everywhere, people experience the speed humps as they go down different parts of Arlington. And so they ask the question, why can't we get them? And I can't really give them a good answer. That's the fundamental point. And so to the extent that we can have a document that answers that question, I'd appreciate it. Because I would love to tell them, read page 43 of the Vision Zero Plan, and they'd be like, oh, okay, I'll go do that soon. That would be really helpful. I'm sorry, I just wanted to plug that one, because it is the number-one question. Anytime we talk about traffic engineering with a common person, that is the first question I get. Why do they get it and I can't? I can't answer it. It's not easy to answer, and I've sat through plenty of people trying to explain it to me.
Well, again, I think the real benefit of the toolkit is for some of these things that are more difficult to answer, that it starts a process that we're able to figure out.
Thank you. Commissioner Bagley?
As a pedestrian, I appreciate all of this. As a former Civic Association president who had to contend with Washington Boulevard, speed bumps not going to be there. Bodies, maybe, but speed bumps, no. There wasn't much of a process four, five years ago, when I started going to the Open Door Mondays, talked to every board member, got all their suggestions, went to PAC, went to everything, and finally got the RFFB at North Nelson, so that people could cross to the Universal Park, and it has been very well-used. I still see drivers go right through it, which is kind of scary. So I have a question. Can you pull up the slide, issue ID and tool selection? Is it possible to pull that back up?
Sure.
I just want to get a, you know, because my process through that was, including getting the money in the CIP, was well over four years. So I just want to understand, so if you have, you've identified, analyzed the location, and then you go to your next screen, which is your timeframe or your timeline, so are you saying that it would be half a year or a year or something in certain cases, including the analysis? And then what happens, I'm assuming staff provides the analysis? How many staff do you have for some of these things? I guess my question is, how realistic are the timelines? And, you know, for somebody who sat in the trenches with people who were very concerned about crossing safely, and there had been people hit on Washington Boulevard, something faster than four years, obviously, which I see as a potential here. I just want to make sure there's enough staff that can do this, and when we're communicating this back to the public, you know, we're in very urban environments, maybe the neighborhoods are a little different with the speed bumps, which I understand. But, you know, there's a lot of pedestrians in the very urban areas. So that would be my question.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for the question, Commissioner Bagley. The toolkit shows, you know, in a very broad sense, what timeline is typically required for some of these tools. So the things that are easier are like, signing and markings can be done, you know, within a single season, meaning a year or less. Some of the other things would require more in-depth analysis, the RFBs that you mentioned, you know, it varies. It's one of these things that could be done in short-term, potentially, but, you know, very often, longer, a little bit longer-term, not a long-term project because of, you know, some of the underground requirements. But we have selected these tools because it does provide that wide variety. There are things that we can do in the short-term that help provide some benefit for people to, you know, that serve whatever need we're trying to serve. There are things that will be a phased approach, where we do that short-term thing first, and then a longer-term, perhaps, capital project comes behind that to build out something that we do. You know, you see, we do a lot of markings and ballards. Those things we can do rather quickly and rapidly to shorten crossings, to keep vehicles out of areas where we don't want them to be. But over time, that can be constructed. And, you know, we've been doing that. There are some that we're completing this year that we call quick builds, where we'll just, you know, do the paint and ballards, and then, you know, a year or two later, it'll be built out as a concrete, you know, more substantive change. So again, we're trying to select things and doing things that, you know, have that short-term all the way to long-term. We do have staff that are working on those short-term things, that are part of our typical programs, like our maintenance program, some of our short-term safety analyses. So we do have the staff that can do those things. And really, the whole purpose of Vision Zero is for these tools to fit within the existing framework, so that it's easy for them to be part of everything we do. Because if we have to do something separate, and it has to be a separate thing, and that's the only way it's going to, you know, survive, then, you know, it's dependent, you know, the critical path is different than if everybody's doing it.
Well, I appreciate the process, a more well-defined process than has been there as we encountered it in the past. And is it your anticipation, then, or the goal, that if we ran into something like we did in my neighborhood, you know, five years ago, or however long it was, that the anticipation would be, it could be addressed faster now with the process than it had been in the past?
It's possible, yeah. And again, it really depends upon the extent of the issue. The Vision Zero program in itself is really trying to target the areas where we see the most risk. So that's essentially, in a nutshell, how we're prioritizing where the risk is greatest.
Great. Thank you.
Chair.
Okay, so we have Commissioner Stroll, Weir, and then Lynn Tullman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Neighbors, for your presentation and your work on this. A couple of questions, and then a couple of pieces of feedback for you. So I'm wondering if staff has considered making this robust document more dynamic, interactive? The executive summary, for example, has a lot of good comparisons. I'm wondering if there's been any discussion about, you know, making that like a database where you could filter by different criteria? Has there been any discussion along those lines?
There has been discussion. We don't have a plan for that. You know, one of the things that we do do is, in the annual meeting, is we show where these tools are being deployed, to kind of give a better sense of where they are, how extensive are they? So we are kind of providing that element. In terms of, you know, I think what you were saying is, like, you know, something a little bit more dynamic in terms of the information, there are links within the document to other jurisdictions, agencies, sometimes Federal Highway Administration, sometimes Virginia Department of Transportation, which have videos that show, like, how do you navigate around about, or things like that? So we are kind of pigging back off of that other existing material. But that is something that we can look at for the future in terms of, if there's gaps in that knowledge, you know, how do we fill in those gaps?
Yeah, I think it's good that you're having those discussions, and you have the other links in there. Like I said, it's very robust. You have a lot of good links and good materials. But I think as people are thinking about different criteria or different solutions, they may want to know that some things, like something that they could go back to Commissioner Bagley, something we could do in a shorter timeframe, has a bigger impact, maybe medium to low cost, and you might be able to filter out things that don't meet that criteria more quickly than having to go through all the different iterations. You could have technology do that for you. So I would hope that, I would suggest that's something to consider, to help staff work smart, not hard, on some of these issues. What is the timeline for updating, maintaining this? On what kind of cycle will this go into, you know, iteration 2.0?
That's a good question. I think as needed, you know, if we see another tool that we want to pilot and test and see how effective it is, and we find it is, then it's something that we can add to the toolbox. I don't think that there would be any defined timeline. I think as soon as something's available, or we find something that's useful, you know, we'll add it. So it's intended to be a dynamic or a living document in terms of that aspect.
That's good. And I think as you're doing that and updating it, I think it would be good, as this will be used in site plans and other things, for, you know, the SPRC and other commissions to be made aware, Transportation Commission, that there are kind of additional tools in the actual toolbox. A couple just comments for feedback. One, I do like your executive summary. I do like that element. I think the visuals could use just a little bit, they could be a little bit better. Some of the graphics, I know were taken from the other part of the document, but the resolution in them is a little fuzzy, and so it's a little tough to see. I would suspect lots of people might be using that executive summary to make comparisons, and that's the first place they land. So, you know, that could maybe be a little better. The cost graphic that you have there, if people aren't paying a ton of attention, because they all appear there, and some of them are shaded in, you may be kind of, you may, some people may not pick up on that. So something to think about. I did note that, also, I guess another thing on the executive summary, it looks like some of those titles for each of the tools is in blue text, which conveys to people that it might be a link, but it doesn't actually link anywhere. So maybe that could be, I know you link elsewhere down to the full text, but the executive summary might be another opportunity to do that. And then finally, in looking at the resources you're citing, your parenthetical citations and the references at the end, a number of those references are a decade old, if not 20 years old. And I'm wondering, Mr. Neighbors, if you could speak to, are these sort of foundational documents, and that's why they're included? I do wonder about the ones that are from like 2002, 2003, whether that's really still the latest and greatest research on what we have here on net zero. So I don't know if you could speak to that briefly? I know I'm kind of catching you off-guard with that one, but...
So, yeah, we, the references, you know, some of them are older because they've been established through the industry for a long time. So we still use those. There is a few locations where we, you know, can collect and mine what's the latest data. You know, some of it does come from, you know, Virginia Department of Transportation. There is a national clearinghouse for this type of information that we can scour to find what's latest and greatest. In general, you know, some of those ones that are older and have been verified more, you know, we're not seeing as much interest from different communities in researching them. The ones that we are seeing more interest in are the ones that are kind of more tactical in nature, and those are those kind of quick-build-type things, you know, like the turn hardening. Those are the things that we see are, people are more focused on that research, because, again, through Vision Zero, we understand, and a lot of other Vision Zero cities understand as well, that if we're not implementing quickly enough, then we're always going to be, you know, chasing this goal, and we won't be able to make a serious headway. So a lot of the more recent research is on some of those kind of more, you know, shorter-term implementations. And some of the other things are more foundational, if that answers your question.
Yeah, that is helpful. And yeah, Federal Highway has lots of, certainly has lots of good resources, including the clearinghouse of which you spoke. So, thank you, Pam Chair. You'll be back.
Chair Weir.
I think tonight, it's just Commissioner Weir. Thank you for the presentation. Two questions. The first is, well, I'm just going to ask them one at a time, and, you know, you can answer. I'll just giving, just letting you know, I've got a second question. So, but the first question is, what is going to be done to integrate the toolkit with the impending update to the master transportation plan? And I'll let you speak to that, and then I've got another question.
Well, that's something that, you know, again, that's just starting. So that's something that, you know, we'll make sure is incorporated, so that, you know, if there is pertinent information that kind of helps provide more definitive guidance in terms of how these tools can be deployed, then we'll make sure that's incorporated. I know we mentioned speed humps, you know, is one of those things that we're looking to get more definitive guidance. So, you know, we'll definitely see areas where that specific guidance is needed, and make sure that is, you know, moved forward through that process.
So for what it's worth, and I'll maybe defer to Commissioner Tullman, to refine this point, and/or to speak for the Transportation Commission, but I actually, on the occasion... point and/or to speak for the Transportation Commission, but I actually, on the occasions when in this body I've had to go to the MTP to inform my own thinking or questions, I was dissatisfied with the extent to which I was able to quantify the targets or the goals that are in the MTP when looking at a street plan, right? And saying whether or not I thought that this particular street plan or particular garage or whatever cross-section comported was in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan. And this, the slideshow that you've presented and then the material in the staff report is much more akin to what I would hope to be able to point to in the master transportation plan in assessing a cross-section, you know, for the purpose of, like, when we are asked to review public use site plans, you know, there's always the question lingering in the air about the extent to which it's in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan. So, you know, make of that comment what you will. My, thank you for your feedback on it. My second question is, if you could go to, actually, on your deck, I think it's slide, no, I don't have page numbers, slide 19, please, just for reference. And this has to do with the modification to corners. There is some language in the full report about modification, about shortening crossing distances that gets directly to the turning radius, which I think is one of the operative issues here, that for benefit of my fellow commissioners, that the turning radius is an issue that the smaller the turning radius, the slower the vehicle has to drive, has to travel in order to make the turn without going over the curb. And a nice wide turning radius, not unlike a nice wide turn on a freeway, encourages faster speeds. So I'm really appreciative of the language, at least in the report, about turning radiuses. My concern is that's a really wide turning radius that we're seeing on this slide. In fact, it, you know, without getting out some graphic software, it actually looks to me wider than the corresponding radius, or than the radius in the corresponding illustrative example or illustrative illustration in the full broader report. And I just really, really hope that it's staff's intent and that as we see this continue to move towards operative language, that we are leaning into the narrowest possible turning radiuses that are, that engineering permits for the purpose of the limiting factor that you articulated, which is trucks. But, you know, trucks can drive slowly too, and I would rather err on the side of a turning radius that protects pedestrians and makes life inconvenient for truck drivers than the alternative. So, again, that's a comment. I'm happy to hear any thoughts or responses. I guess I lied when I said I had a second question, but thank you again for coming in tonight.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Weir. I will say, you know, basically that, you know, the intent of what we do on the streets is to provide accommodations for all. And very often, because a lot of our streets were designed a while ago, we do see that there are opportunities for reducing that turn radius, you know, for lack of a better description, you know, taking back space for different uses and not necessarily having it fully dedicated to motor vehicles. So that is, I think, a common theme that we see in a lot of our projects today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lynn Tellme.
Yes, first of all, I do want to align myself with Chair Weir's comments there. And I'd like to go a little further in that this is a toolkit, of course, but a number of the, especially the design elements in here are ones that really should be applying to every street and every intersection we have. I'm hoping that this means that when time comes, that not even in response to a community's requests or a particular site plan, that when time comes to redesign a particular street because of routine maintenance, it needs to get dug up and rebuilt, that all of these design elements will then be included as a matter of course whenever a street is being redesigned and rebuilt. Is that correct?
I fully believe that's the intent, and that's what we're trying to achieve, yes.
Okay, great. I have a question, a comment, actually, which will end up going back to Chair Weir. I know that one of the most effective tools that we have in this toolkit, as far as I can, I'm concerned, is the speed cameras. I've seen how they've been used in the district, and I'm very impressed about how they really do influence traffic behavior. The tunnel under Washington Circle on K Street has a speed camera, 25 mile a speed limit, and the traffic goes at 25 miles an hour. Virtually every vehicle going through there is at that speed limit. 295 Kennelworth Avenue, Anacostia Freeway, has speed cameras for 50 mile an hour speed limit. And for the most part, at this point, not three years ago, but now, after experience, traffic really keeps to that speed limit pretty well, if not below it, or often below it, and not just because of heavy traffic. It's really surprising to me how effective that is, and that's great. We're hobbled in our use of it, as you mentioned. We can only use it, if I'm correct, in construction zones and school zones.
Correct.
I would ask that when we're looking for our list of things for going, for legislative changes, which you've raised, I saw that earlier, we add to that lifting the limits on the use of speed cameras, that it should be able to be used by any jurisdiction where they deem it appropriate. They are effective, and they're one of the best ways to keep that speed down. So that's good. And finally, one more comment, which is following up on Commissioner Schroll, a design element in the actual document itself, and this is almost silly, but the cover picture you have is so out of date now that none of, that block was scraped. There's nothing left anymore on that block. It's now a large apartment, you know, mixed-use apartment going up above it. It's already like 10 stories up, it's going to go to over 20. We should put one that, and on top of that, the street in front of it will be mainly, as you probably already know, major reconfiguration as part of that site plan. We were able to get a major modifications of where Washington Boulevard, I'm sorry, where Clarendon and Wilson Boulevards come together. So that picture probably should be updated.
Okay.
Especially going forward.
No doubt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bagley, and then, okay, Commissioner Bagley.
Yeah, one quick question, I guess on the flip side of that. I, as a pedestrian walking around, if I go to Walk Arlington, and, you know, we pride ourselves on getting all the information out about walking around, walkability here, will there be incorporated links to Vision Zero places I can scan with a QR code as I'm walking around and I notice that, hmm, this seems kind of strange, or I have questions about this intersection? Just seems if we're going to go through all this, that we should have something also tying to the people that are actually on foot or looking how they go on foot to tie back to this, just a thought, just a comment, so.
Okay. Yeah, that's a good thought. I know that we've discussed this in terms of, you know, various types of projects, you know, having that type of communication tool. I think that's something I do have to check back with to see, you know, what our capacity for doing that type of thing is, but we've heard this feedback before. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further comments, I just want to reach out to Commissioner Gier and to see if Commissioner Gier had any comments on this matter.
You are so kind, Madam Vice Chair. No, I do not, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Neighbors. Thank you for briefing us on this matter.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, may we call the next matter? Oh, actually, before we call the next matter, I just wanted everybody to know that from time to time, the Planning Commission does allow the Vice Chair to host a meeting, and so that is what we are doing here tonight in case anybody is confused as to why Mr. Weir is sitting next to me and not doing his dutiful responsibility. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to take over tonight's meeting.
For those who don't know, I anticipate that I will be asking Commissioner Patel to chair the November 5 meeting for, let's call it medical reasons. And Commissioner Patel wisely asks, I think, to chair tonight's meeting as a, in anticipation of that.
Figure out how to rein things in, is that what it is?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk, please. Thank you very much.
Sure. Item number two is ZOA-2022-03, FBC-26, and N-FBC-13. This is an ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify the Arlington County zoning ordinance to allow micro fulfillment centers. We have Jill Hunger, our AED staff, to present this item, as well as Mark McCully is on the team's call as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Ms. Hunker.
Great. Thank you, Vice Chair Patel, and Chair Weir, and members of the commission for having me here this evening. Again, as Giselle pointed out, Jill Hunger with CPHD, I'm joined with Mark McCully from AED to present this to you this evening, so hopefully this is going to work. All right, here we go. So I had the fortune to present to this, a smaller group of you with ZOCO, so I apologize if some of you are rehearing this, but I wanted to put this on the record for the Planning Commission. So our commercial market resiliency strategy is really to provide a new, quicker process for the establishment of commercial uses that are not clearly defined in the Arlington County zoning ordinance today. This strategy introduced a new process for considering zoning strategies for new uses. For proposed new or amended uses that are determined by staff to have a scale or a type of activity has a limited impact on surrounding area, a quicker and more efficient process was presented that allowed for an initial period of staff analysis, very broadly scoped request to advertise, a streamlined engagement process, and continued analysis, a descriptive summary of the proposed action, which is included in the legally required advertisement, and then the Planning Commission and the board consideration of the zoning ordinance amendment. The goal of this different approach for newer amended uses is to have them ready for a board consideration a bit more quickly than other typical zoning studies. So this is the first application of that county manager's strategy to ensure the commercial market resiliency. Just for your reference, the county board did authorize advertisement on July 16, 2022. I think the question is sort of, micro fulfillment centers, and what are they? It's really the quick delivery of goods to customers, the last mile of the customer fulfillment process. It's much a smaller scale than the larger, more typical warehouse facilities, and the idea is, and the placement is to access the dense clusters of their desired customers. Without a specific definition in the zoning ordinance, a micro fulfillment center would likely be viewed as most approximate to a warehouse and freight movement, and those are uses only permitted in Arlington's limited number of industrial districts. So why should we amend these? One, to expand the number of locations where a micro fulfillment center is permitted, which then creates occupancy opportunities for commercial spaces that could be in challenging locations for conventional retail, and it also supports Arlington's competitive market positioning for residents, workers, and visitors who come to expect these types of services and the conveniences they offer. Sorry about that. Here we go. So again, the micro fulfillment center and how we've looked at it is, we've categorized them as retail sales and define them as any establishment for the receipt, transfer, short-term storage, and dispatching of retail and other similar goods. And the idea is, where should they be? So what you see in front of you is that we've proposed the following districts for consistency across other retail sales districts. So we took what we see in our commercial and mixed-use zoning districts, looked at all of the other different types of retail sales uses, and really applied that to these commercial districts listed out here, the industrial districts, as well as our form-based code districts. So again, following sort of our retail sales. And then we've developed some proposed use standards, some of which have been adopted by other jurisdictions, including Fairfax County and Prince William County, among others. And these are recommended by staff to mitigate the activity onsite and include the following. And I would want to point out that additionally, for those of you that reviewed some of these proposed use standards at the September 13 ZOCO meeting, there have been a couple of refinements. The 10,000 square feet of a limitation on the square footage of the use, it does reflect the industry best practices and staff discussion with a micro fulfillment center's operators' commercial space needs. And we believe this is an appropriate threshold for these uses and will accommodate the various models of micro fulfillment centers. For the location of the use and its relationship to activate street frontages, we wanted to ensure that spaces that might have direct pedestrian access to the street would be required to have walk-in customer sales areas. The transparency and penetration requirements per site plans would not be changed with this proposed amendment. The parking is aligned with recently approved commercial mixed-use buildings, and if located within a site plan building, the conditions within the site plan would regulate the parking requirements of the commercial space. Finally, as this is a delivery-based retail sales model, we've developed use standards to require that all fulfillment and delivery activities at the establishment occur within the building or onsite. So to encourage transportation modes other than vehicles, staff recommends that no less than 10% of all deliveries to off-site customers must be made by bike or pedestrian. And like the square footage standard, this percentage does derive from a micro fulfillment center provider. It's anticipated that, quite truthfully, after the initial startup, and if more than one micro fulfillment center operates in Arlington, this modal split actually may increase. Further, to number the, and to limit the number of large delivery trucks on non-arterial streets, staff recommends that vehicular delivery of goods to off-site customers use only passenger cars, pickups, and panel trucks, as defined in our Code of Virginia and referenced in Chapter 14.2, Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Again, this was in deference to some suggestions by ZOCO and really narrowing down what we meant for these smaller vehicles. Much appreciated. So finally, the engagement strategy. The county manager had the opportunity to present again to the county board during his manager's report on September 20 about the commercial market resiliency, and recognized that it does, and he has initiated a streamlined approach to engagement for this quick and nimble use change. So the idea is the promoting resiliency through innovation and risk-appropriate processes and regulations for new or expanded uses. So what we've done is a level of engagement of Communicate through public notices, agendas, and reports that were done in advance of the Planning Commission and also the county board actions. And then consult, we've developed an online form for feedback or questions on these proposed changes, and stood up this new commercial market resiliency website, which lists all these, these uses. And with this, we have an opportunity to explore alternative engagement strategies with the zoning committee and planning commission processes, and it was suggested even, or thought of a consent agenda, working with you. And the idea around all of this is to really limit the multiple in-person or virtual presentations, sort of long-term. I think you've been seeing, or the county board's been seeing, a variety of different amendments that come forward. So again, given the limited impact that this proposed use as a micro fulfillment center that, as it's located in our commercial mixed-use districts, it was our assessment that relatively few micro fulfillment centers would be established in Arlington in the coming years. The targeted use standards that are proposed, and therefore, we're using the tools primarily from the Communicate, and have gone through with the outreach. Again, we've briefed the Planning Commission and EDC, and upon the approval of the request advertised in advance of the September ZOCO, we published an overview on the zoning studies website. So all of this is to say, sort of what we are recommending. It's a lot of language and a lot of words here. I believe you have copies of the staff report recommending adoption of the attached ordinance to amend, reenact, recodify, the zoning ordinance, a variety of articles, and really to allow micro fulfillment centers through the provision of use standards in many of our commercial and mixed-use zoning districts. Thank you, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hunker. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
We do have two speakers. Give me just, I'm going to pull their names up. Give me just, I'm going to pull their names up. Actually, Mr. Musso is here to speak. You can go ahead and come on, Mr. Musso.
Thank you so much. Good evening.
All right, evening. I'm grateful you're here. Sorry about that. Should I start from the beginning? Oh, sorry. Well, I guess just on behalf of the chamber, we want to express our support for the, this amendment. We think these amendments are part of a much larger and broader need to modernize the zoning ordinance that's obviously been reflected in the commercial market resiliency initiative, and we greatly support the future phases of that initiative as they kind of go forward into the end of this year and the next. So we strongly encourage the Commission to adopt this change and the additional changes to come, and hopefully, things like micro fulfillment centers can be a part of the greater Arlington economy going forward. So thank you very much for your time, and I yield the remainder of my time to this. Bye.
Thank you very much. And we did receive the written comment from the chamber as well.
Okay, our second speaker, give me just one moment. I'd like to see her name. Our second speaker is Tamar Katic.
Ms. Tamar Katic?
Ms. Katic, are you still on the line?
Maybe we should see if there's any other Commissions that want to speak.
It sounds like the only one you would have is not leaning forward.
Not you? Okay. Who's referring to him?
This was not before the TC, Transportation Commission.
Ms. Tamar, if you're on the line, would you please unmute yourself so that we can hear you speaking?
Okay, well, the matter is before the Commission. This matter did come before ZOCO, and Commissioner Starley ran a wonderful meeting in which there were several of the items were brought before the meeting on that night. Commissioner Starley, did you, I did mark down a couple of the buckets that we had that night that we were, we met, which were issues around the dimensions, issues around the definition of commercial versus non-commercial vehicles, and then as well as the enforcement of limitations on alternative transportation uses. Were there any other matters that we should highlight as well?
The one concern that did come up during the meeting was the possibility of reaching out to the neighborhoods a little bit more. We feel that the process was a little bit opaque on that front. Ms. Hunger did, however, answer all the other questions and comments that you highlighted.
Are there any questions or comments by the Commissioners? Commissioner Lantome?
Yeah, some clarifying questions, I think that that's what they probably are. First off, would this contemplate, well, first off, this is a great idea. I'm very happy we're doing this, and I'm very happy that it's being done so quickly, and I hope this is only the first of many of these that we see coming forward for modifying our zoning ordinance to bring it up to date for uses that we didn't contemplate when the zoning ordinance was being written. So that comment aside, would this, for example, allow mini fulfillment centers to be in underused garages, assuming that is consistent with the building code?
Assuming consistent with the building code and assuming that parking can be managed in another way, it may require a site plan amendment for our site plan buildings to, to address the parking ratios that were approved originally, but yes.
Great, because we have so many parking garages, both down in Crystal City and along the RB corridor, that are underutilized, that it's, it would be great to be able to start using that space for something that would be productive.
Sure. Again, it will, it will require one additional step than what we had originally anticipated, but yes.
Understood, but I would hope we'd be very favorable in doing that and make that go through fast also. The 10,000 square feet limitation, is that per site or is that per company or vendor?
That is per site.
Okay, so if you have a fairly, so there has to be, clearly have to be at least 10,000 square feet on the site anyway in order for, you know, to reach that limit, but if it was a 20,000 square foot, you can only have one. You can't have two. You couldn't have one UPS and one be Amazon on that same site if it was 20,000 square feet available.
The, I guess the individual tenant can only be the 10,000 square feet.
But there could be two on the site, though.
Yeah, for, yes, it would be per certificate of occupancy.
Because we have a number of buildings that are very large that could presumably accommodate a couple of, you know, maybe two or three 10,000 square foot micro fulfillment centers on that one site with different tenants.
That is correct. Similar to accommodating restaurants, similar to accommodating childcare, accommodating any other type of use, yes.
Again, clarifying, I just want to make sure. I'm not complaining, I just wanted to know. And finally, bicycle definition. That contemplates electric bikes as being bicycles?
Yes.
And would that contemplate tricycles? Because if we're dealing with packages, tricycles are more stable and might be able to have more
Yes.
electric trucks.
Yes.
And what about bicycle trailers? Those would be presumably allowed too.
I'd assume so, as it's an accessory to the bicycle, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those were my questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Scholl?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Hunger, thanks for your work on this and for coming to ZOCO and then presenting this evening. As I raised during ZOCO, and I'll raise again, I'm wondering about staff's outreach to civic associations or the Civic Federation on this matter, since you mentioned during our ZOCO presentation and in the staff report, staff's extensive outreach to the business community and NAOP, the Chamber.
Sure, and, and I want to clarify the comments they made with, with discussions with the Chamber and, and the, with NAOP, is that it was really an overview of our commercial market resiliency, similar to what I presented to the Planning Commission as well. One of the examples was micro fulfillment. So it really wasn't an outreach about micro fulfillment per se, it was about the commercial market resiliency. Those presentations were identical to the presentations that were provided during the manager's reports that were done with the county board and, and broadcast that way. So, so in that way, we feel as we have done the outreach that has been consistent with many other zoning text amendments of this feature.
Okay, appreciate the clarification. So could you describe for me what staff views as the difference between targeted outreach and enhanced outreach? How are you documenting that? Where would I see, who you're reaching out to? If you could go into that into some detail, that would be helpful.
Sure, I think it might be a little bit more clarified, sort of the streamlined approach is broadcasting it on our web pages, ensuring that it is advertised appropriately, going before with the county board for our RTA. I think that's sort of more the streamlined approach. As we get to more of a nuanced approach and the more, and that type of engagement, it's what you would see with a much more robust engagement and interaction, and that nuanced approach would go sort of our typical process of that, it would go to ZOCO first, then to an RTA for discussion, and then to an action by the county board.
Okay, that's helpful. So I don't necessarily have any qualms about this zoning amendment and some of the other ones that I think are going to come before us. It's more that I don't know that staff nor the Commission knows if there is an opposition to something if you haven't done enough outreach. So if you're not doing outreach to civic associations, how does a civic association that engages regularly with a planning process, the ones along the various corridors, how do they know that a new use is, you know, going to be allowed and permitted? And so, and again, it's not anything about this one amendment, but, you know, it, it's hard for me to say that something should go on the consent agenda when you haven't necessarily gotten the broad consent of people, that this is a good idea. And so, how we do what we, how we do what we do matters. And so, I get that you want to move quickly, and I support that, but, and I also want staff to be engaging with, you know, broad stakeholders as you do that. And so, I guess I'm putting a, a flag in the ground now, Ms. Hunger, that the next time this comes around through this process and that, you know, stakeholder outreach hasn't been very robust, I'm going to be reticent to support the amendment.
That is appreciated. Thank you.
Commissioner Hughes?
I'm going to piggyback, first of all, on Commissioner Scholl's comment to just note, I mean, we didn't even hear this at the Form-Based Code Advisory Working Group. Staff, it's a staff-driven process, so that's perfectly within staff's prerogative. That's where I'm going to leave that comment, just I think Commissioner Scholl's already done a good job of explaining that. On the bicycle language inside the zoning texts, I don't think we're strong enough on it to clarify the questions that Commissioner Lantome laid out of the various e-cargo bikes, trikes, other methods of urban mobility that are very common throughout Europe, that we could do a better job of exemplifying what we expect to see for this 10% use. And finally, I get the urgency in this. I mean, I understand we have a very high vacancy rate across the county right now, but I will not support, but I will not oppose this. I'm going to put it that way. I'm going to abstain, but I want to say why. And Commissioner Lantome began to sort of go down the rabbit hole of examples or possibilities. And the first site that comes to mind is Bolero. Bolero was a vacant retail space for a very long time. The reason it was vacant is because it extended way back into that building, the Buchanan on 23rd Street. And the insistence on an active retail frontage there created a brand-new experience that makes 23rd Street what 23rd Street is in Crystal City. And JBG and the others who've owned that building for a time or time would much rather have had a higher-yielding client, I'm certain, than what they're probably getting for Bolero. And I don't even know the specifics, but I can take a good guess, given how long they market at that very difficult place to lease. And so, to the extent that we allow this very demanding use on time, because while we are restricting the way cars are being delivered the packages from the facility to the customers, we are not precluding all those warehouses in Fredericksburg being, or outside for Walmart, for example, outside of Harrisonburg, being loaded with an 18-wheeler and driven all the way into Arlington in the middle of 2:00 AM, where they will unload all these things and do their deliveries throughout the day, weeks, and nights. And I don't think we've done, I think this is a situation where we're going to have a situation where we will probably have good clients, like most zoning things, who are really great neighborhoods, neighbors and partners, who'll do good buildings. And we're going to have one or two who take advantage of the situation, create problems throughout the current community. And it's for those reasons that I'm not going to oppose it, but I don't think we've done the right due diligence necessary to understand the very many possibilities that this particular change in the zoning ordinance can be used to make what was otherwise an active, enjoyable retail skate that may have been open until 2:00 AM in the morning, a very different experience for the neighbors. So with that, Lee Abak, Madam Chair, Patel, and appreciate staff's changes from our ZOCO meeting as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Steinberger?
Good evening. And obviously, I was not here at the beginning of the presentation, so if the questions that I have have already been addressed, I beg leeway and just, you know, let me know that. How many square feet is typically a full-size procurement center? Is there an average size for that?
Like a typical warehouse?
Commissioner Steinberger, several hundred thousand square feet.
Hundred thousand, okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes.
Okay, for a scaling purpose, I was trying to get a sense of that. Thank you. In terms of sort of some of the other localities, I know we modeled some of the definitions we're looking at off of Fairfax and I think some other of our neighbors, how many, if you know, how many micro procurement centers does Fairfax have or any of our other localities that we kind of looked at?
Sure. I don't know the numbers that have been approved since they, they changed their zoning ordinance. I think they changed their zoning ordinance in '21, or they're about '20 or '21. So we can find that out for you. I don't have that number.
Okay. I'd be curious, certainly with micro procurement centers, or my sense is that it's location, 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 in terms of how quickly we can get something out, but I do think that, you know, given some of our nearby neighbors and what other localities have in terms of micro procurement centers, I'd be curious in kind of what that spread is and what we're sort of offering or going to have available, you know, by Arlington, making these changes as well. I do want to express, I found the prior comments from my fellow commissioner very insightful in terms of, you know, there's always going to be, you know, good tenants and then less good tenants. And in terms of sort of what that looks like when you have something that, you know, when you're talking about a functionality that's going to have a lot of loading and unloading and that, how we establish, you know, what hours that can take place at and what we look at, I think we do want to be looking at some constraints or some, you know, enforcement on, on those activities, because I think that's what's going to ultimately, what I, I think this is a good idea. I am going to support it. But I think in order for this to be a success and not something that is simply fodder for unhappy neighbors and, you know, bad neighbor relations, I think we need to be cognizant of that and have some parameters in place so that the best intentions don't end up with angry phone calls at 4:00 in the morning. Thank you.
That's appreciated. We do have our noise ordinance in place with respect to noise, and I, I do believe many of our site plans have, or some, I'm going to turn to Anthony real quick, have, have conditions with respect to hours of loading operations as well.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Guerin, did you have any questions or comments on this matter?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. No, although I do align myself with Commissioner Scholl and Commissioner Hughes's comments about making sure that when we propose a new change to a use, we try to provide some outreach to the community. Thanks.
Thank you so much. So seeing no more, no further questions or comments, I will look to Ms. Commissioner Starley for a motion? No, I will not? I will?
Sorry, I did not prepare a motion.
Oh, well, I can give this to you. How about that?
Thank you. I have a motion ready.
Chair.
Yeah, let's do the narrative version. All right, we recommend to adopt the attached ordinance to amend the, amend, reenact.
The Planning Commission recommends to the county board that they
The Planning Commission recommends to the county board that they adopt the attached ordinance to amend, reenact, amend, reenact, and recodify Arlington County zoning ordinance, Article 7, 8, 11, 12, and 18, along with Sections 3 of Appendix A and Part 9 of Appendix B, to allow micro fulfillment centers through the provision of use standards in the RA 4.8, R-C, RA-H, 32, and C1, and, do I have to read all this? M-U-V-S, C-O, 1.0, C-O, 1.5, C-O, 2.5, CO, COA, CO Roslyn, CO Crystal City, CO2, CTH, C3CR, CP, FBC, that's a Form-Code, CPN, FBC, CM, M1, and M2 districts, and to categorize and define micro
The planning commission recommends to the county board that they adopt the attached
ordinance to amend, reenact, amend, reenact, and recodify Arlington County zoning ordinance, Article 7, 8, 11, 12, and 18, along with Sections 3 of Appendix A and Part 9 of Appendix B, to allow micro fulfillment centers through the provision of use standards in the RA 4.8, R-C, RA-H, 3-2, and C1, M, do I have to read all this? MUVS, C-O, 1.0, C-O, 1.5, C-O, 2.5, COA, CO Roslyn, CO Crystal City, CO2, CTHC, 3CR, CP, FBC, that's a Form Based Code, CPN, FBC, CM, M1, and M2 districts, and to categorize and define micro fulfillment centers.
Wonderful. Do I have a second? No? Is there something?
Thank you, Vice Chair Patel. Commissioner Starley, I do believe the further language inside the staff report also needs to be read in the recommendation after micro fulfillment center.
I will go on.
I'm reading from the staff report.
It doesn't have any language here. It says, "No issues have been identified to the date of this report."
Ms. Hunger, do you happen to have the language that we could put back on the screen?
It looked like at the bottom, they had a different sort of textual language, it was very similar on the staff report, so I think you're probably good based on that. Yeah. Sorry, I was trying.
There is a slightly different here, but it's okay. We're good. Thanks, James.
Yeah.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Steinberger.
I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner Steinberger.
Commissioner Steinberger, let me tell them.
I have Commissioner Steinberger raise your hand.
I raised my hand. I just didn't say words.
It's okay. I've seen you. I see you, Commissioner Steinberger.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? Wonderful. Chair Weir.
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes.
Epstein.
Commissioner Weir, I'm sorry, Commissioner Geren.
Aye.
Commissioner Lantomey.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Aye.
Chair Bagley.
Aye.
Commissioner Starley.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel, aye. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. We have eight ayes the motion carries. Okay. We are done with this matter. Thank you so much, Ms. Hunger, for sticking in with us on this matter. Thank you all so much. Thank you. Have a great night. Mr. Fusarelli, you're here to give us some updates on bylaws. We're just moving right along here tonight, Mr. Fusarelli.
Don't give him any reason.
We're not. We're not. It's a new day. It's a new day. Let's, we're moving right along.
Look at that, man. I can see him smiling. You know he will.
Oh, he is. No.
Thank you for bearing with me for one moment.
These updates also have a five-minute time limit, unlike the other ones.
Good evening. Thank you again for the record, Anthony Fusarelli, Planning Director with Community Planning, Housing and Development. This evening, I am happy to be here tonight, really for a brief follow-up on our conversation that we had last month regarding the commission's recent transition to hybrid meetings, beginning back in September 1st. To start with, let me make sure my slide deck is, there we go. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. To start with, just a few brief reminders on key elements of the 2022 Electronic Meetings Bill, effective as of September 1. First, while the Planning Commission is not one of the several, is one of the several commissions that is not eligible for virtual meetings, individual members of the Planning Commission may participate remotely in certain circumstances. Additionally, remote participation for medical reasons, either for self or for family members that requires the care, can be approved without any specific numerical limit. However, members, when participating remotely due to personal matters, are limited to up to 25% of meetings held annually, or up to two meetings, depending on which is greater for a particular public body. For a member to participate electronically, there are several fundamental requirements that must be met. First, there must be an in-person quorum. And for the full Planning Commission, as exemplified this evening, that quorum is a simple majority. And then, when we are talking about committees or subgroups, the quorum that was incorporated into the revised bylaws as of last month is the number of three. Three members would constitute a quorum. Second, the chair of the public body must approve all requests for individual members to participate remotely before the meeting. And then, this is also really important, and I think worth emphasizing, is that in our meeting minutes, it must reflect with specificity the nature of the personal matter for which the member is participating remotely. So our conversations, our understanding to date with our county attorney's office is it's not simply sufficient to say so-and-so is participating remotely for personal matters. There needs to be some additional detail or level of specificity. It doesn't need to go into great detail, but there needs to be more specificity than just saying a personal matter. And for that, we appreciate everyone's cooperation going forward and over the past few weeks already. So last month, the commission approved revisions to its bylaws that allowed for the creation of subgroups for certain committee meetings, especially for Site Plan Review Committee, or SPRC. We also anticipate there will be some LRPC or Long Range Planning Committee meetings where subgroups will be warranted and created. Under the construct within the bylaws, each subgroup is a distinct public body established by the commission with a formally adopted roster. Specific to each subgroup, members may participate electronically, as I said earlier, for up to two, or 25% of the meetings per year, essentially whichever is greater. But again, all of the other requirements need to be met in order for a commission member to participate electronically. So I know, I think since we started this transition in early September, there've been a number of, I think, conversations and questions between staff and members of the commission, preparing for upcoming meetings at the Site Plan Review Committee, with Long Range Planning Committee. And I know there've been a number of questions, and I just wanted to share some additional information and perspective this evening that hopefully helps address those questions, and happy to, you know, take any remaining questions that commissioners may have. A few points to consider when it comes to the establishment of subgroups, really is that for a subgroup to be created, we see the committee of the Planning Commission really being the convener of that particular process to review a specific item. We also anticipate that, you know, subgroups and rosters would be appropriate to create when there are other stakeholder groups or representatives of advisory boards and commissions that would specifically be invited to participate at the table. And also, expectation for multiple meetings, you know, a process to review a specific study that where it's not just a single meeting, but where there's anticipated to be several meetings as part of a larger review process. And I know, I think, I believe, on the Site Plan Review Committee, I think there's a pretty solid level of clarity and understanding that we've been working through. I think most recently, where some additional questions remain is on the Long Range Planning Committee arena. And to provide a little bit more clarity here, I think that from our perspective, we would see, as most appropriate, the creation of LRPC subgroups in instances where there are three specific criteria or conditions that are present as it relates to a process. First is that, and these are listed really in the right-hand box on this slide, a specific project scope anticipates LRPC as the main convener for that engagement. Secondly, would be that LRPC and other stakeholder groups are specifically invited to participate in the LRPC meetings. And then, third is that, again, the expectation that this would be a multi-meeting process spread over time. A couple of specific examples of the types of studies that we would anticipate in LRPC subgroup, I think you could think of any of the special glob studies that we've recently completed or were currently undertaking or will undertake. The Crystal City Building Height Study, I think, is another example where a roster we would see as an appropriate, a subgroup as an appropriate approach to LRPC. And that roster would, of course, need to be approved by the full commission prior to a subgroup meeting. Another question that I think has come up, and I believe actually, the information I'm going to share this evening is a bit of an update compared to the information that was shared back in September. Through further discussions with our county attorney's office, I think the guidance and recommendation that we've received and wanted to sort of extend to the commission is really thinking about each of the planning commission's public bodies, if you would, as a distinct public body, and then accounting for the limits of electronic participation individually within each public body. So a couple slides here to really help, hopefully, illustrate that. For Planning Commission hearings, the assumption would be an individual member could participate up to 25% of meetings held per year, not attended, but held. And then likewise, for any of the committees that don't include a subgroup, the creation of a subgroup, we would assume that that would also be up to 25% per year. There's a working assumption there that there would be at least eight meetings. Otherwise, if there were fewer than eight Zoco meetings, for example, two would be a greater number than 25%. So those are, you know, some details that we will continue to work through. But for this illustrative purpose this evening, just making that assumption here. And then, the important point on the subgroup's perspective is that each subgroup is really its own entity. And so that if there is a subgroup created for Site Plan A, then there would be, each commissioner could participate up to two meetings per year for that subgroup, so long as the chair has approved the requests and all the other requirements are met. And just to kind of carry this one step further, you know, this is a really just hypothetical example, but if we were to look at a potential year of meetings, this chart here really details out Planning Commission meeting, monthly hearings, and the 25% result of that. The non-subgroup Zoco and LRPC meetings, we've assumed here that all SPRCs would have a subgroup, and that the LRPCs, several LRPCs would have a subgroup. So you could basically see where the limit of two meetings comes into play versus the 25%. And then, if we were subtotal this all out, or total it all out at the bottom, you could see in this hypothetical, you know, roughly, or more than a third of meetings could be participated in electronically, so long as all the proper requirements are met. And the last slide here, just wanted to briefly cover a few of the follow-up questions from the September meeting. I think one question was for a joint meeting, if there's a joint LRPC and Zoco meeting, would that quorum stay at three? Would it go to six? The response back from conversations with our county attorney is, you know, if the committee makeup is the same, the quorum would remain at three. So hopefully, that helps address that question. We also learned that unfortunately, the Virginia Code does not make allowances for quarums to be temporarily adjusted when commissioners might be on FNLA. And so, there really isn't any accommodations that the code currently allows for that, based on feedback we've received from the attorney's office. And I think we've spoken to some degree about the establishment and updating of subgroup rosters. If there's any further questions on that, we would be happy to try to address them. So that is my last slide, and thank you for your time. Happy to take any questions that might remain.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fusarelli. Commissioner Schroll, and then Commissioner Weir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Fusarelli, I want to thank you for walking through those slides and providing the greater clarification on a number of questions, because a number of those were my questions that came up this past week, and with Commissioner Lantomey about an upcoming LRPC meeting. So I do want to thank you and staff for providing that. That's great. And, you know, I do think that this is very helpful. The one question I do have, I guess I have one question for you, perhaps two, which is, who's making the decision about whether an LRPC falls into a subgroup or not? And is that something that staff is sort of determining, or are you envisioning that that would be a conversation with the LRPC chair in advance of that decision? I say that because in the lead-up to this meeting, Commissioner Lantomey and I had discussion with staff, and initially thought we should have a subgroup, and I think staff rightly pointed out that we were incorrect and that we didn't need one. But if we did, there wasn't time in the calendar to have done that for this meeting, and the LRPC would have had to get pushed off a month. So I'm wondering, or everybody has to meet in person and nobody can participate electronic, virtually, I guess would be the other alternative. That's correct. So I'm wondering if you could speak to your current thinking about how you arrive at that determination.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Schroll, for the question, and glad, you know, glad to be here tonight and hopefully address some of the questions that have come up. I think the ideal situation, as is often the case, is that decision to really be a jointly-made decision between staff and the commissioner chairing that effort. I think we would be looking towards reaching agreement and general consensus on the approach. And I think we have, you know, a good experience and foundation of getting there. We, from our perspective, it's certainly the committee or subgroup of the commission, and so we are here to support the work of the commission. But I think to the extent that we could be aligned in sort of the conclusions of how to approach it, I think that would be ideal. The one other thing I would just reinforce, and it didn't, I don't think it specifically was touched on in my prepared remarks, but, you know, there also is, as many of you know who particularly have been working with staff in establishing rosters for SPRC, there is a fair amount of time, of staff time required and commissioner time required to kind of go through and arrive at those rosters. And so, if it is, again, just one meeting we are looking at, or, you know, one meeting with the potential for several down the road, if we can avoid the need to generate a roster that might not have a longer shelf life, I think we all might benefit in terms of kind of using our limited resources, you know, most efficiently.
Yeah, that's helpful. And then, you mentioned, Mr. Fusarelli, that, you know, if people are participating virtually, you know, that needs to be captured in the meeting minutes. I'm wondering, you know, how that's going to be facilitated, if, you know, the chair is approving those requests. Is it as simple as CCing the staff member or members who are managing that, and that is sufficient to ensure that it's captured in the meeting minutes? Or are you recommending a different approach?
And thank you for that follow-up question. Just to clarify, are you talking, are you asking specifically about other members of the commission who might be participating electronically, or members of the public as well?
Not necessarily members of the public, but if it's the members of this body, or if it's a member of a subgroup who's requesting to participate virtually, my understanding is it has to be captured in the meeting minutes. And I'm wondering what's your preferred approach to facilitate that? Is it, you know, as simple as CCing, you know, I'm leading an upcoming site plan with Ms. Badger, do I just CC Ms. Badger on all those communications?
I think that's a great question. I think as an interim solution, I think that would be an efficient way to manage that. I would also suggest, let us go back and look at, take another look at some of the guidance document, guidance documents we have from some of our support and the Communications and Engagement Group in the manager's office, because we want to be sure we're not missing anything in terms of anything in terms of, in the meeting itself, to what level of detail, you know, the chair needs to acknowledge that a commissioner or a subgroup member might be participating electronically, and whether or not there needs to be a certain level of detail in terms of their participation. So we'll regroup on that. But I think, for the time being, absolutely, you know, good practice to copy staff on approved requests for, and actually, request that aren't approved, because those also, I believe, need to be captured in the minutes as well.
That's helpful.
And just a reminder, just a reminder to fellow commissioners, to make sure that we copy Ms. Johnson on all of our communications regarding planning matters, planning commission matters.
And just recent example, reminder, it's not only the personal nature or example, but the location to which they are calling in. So in your response back to them, in addition to copying our wonderful staff, don't forget to ask two questions.
Okay, Commissioner Weir.
Mr. Fusarelli, I just want to thank you again and your team and everyone who participated in this. Can you just humor me and pull up Slide 8 from your deck, please?
Absolutely. Please, give me one moment.
I just want to make sure everyone, that this isn't lost on anyone, that this nightmare of a table to have to wrap your mind around is why we are here. It is why we've been having this conversation, why we have asked y'all to wrap your brains around bylaws arcana, and it is why Mr. Fusarelli and his team have put in just an ungodly amount of time into figuring out these questions. And I will speak for myself, but I think I'll speak for everyone to say again how much we appreciate the work that you've all put in so far. I think that there are a few areas where we're not necessarily pleased, as you predicted, with the guidance we've gotten from the county attorney, and, you know, perhaps that will be reflected in the motion when we get to the legislative priorities. You know, but thank you again.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Ellen Tellme.
First, I want to thank Commissioner Schroll for raising the questions I otherwise would have raised. So thank you there. But if you get the slide deck back up again, I just told you, don't take it down quite yet. I did have a quorum question from one of the beginning slides. Let's see, where was it? Yes, that one, that one. For committees and subgroups, the three members, three members of the planning commission or three members of people on the roster for that committee or subgroup?
Well, so I think the working assumption for committee is there's only planning commissioners on a committee.
Right, but for the subgroups.
So that would be three. For the subgroups, I believe the bylaws that were, the revised bylaws that were adopted in September, it would be three members total, planning commissioners or non-planning commissioners. However, one of those, one of those three members who are physically present to constitute that quorum must be a commissioner, a planning commissioner.
So presumably, the chair would be there anyway. But so the member of the Lion Park Civic Association who's at the table would count in the quorum, and the representative from the Parks and Rec Commission who's there would count as the quorum, as long as they were on the approved roster?
Exactly.
Perfect, thank you. That's the clarification I needed.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Steinberger.
I may regret asking this. PFRC is not addressed on these slides. How is?
That's because it's even worse.
How is PFRC being handled?
Well, we have concluded that the Public Facilities Review Committee is not, it's not a committee, it's not a public body of the planning commission.
Right.
So it is being handled within sort of the universe of other commissions that still have to follow the newly enacted electronic meetings law. It is a commission that has more flexibility, because in contrast to the planning commission, which is one of the few commissions that can't have any 100% virtual meetings, the Public Facilities Review Committee can, in fact, have a certain number of all virtual meetings.
Ah, okay. I do not regret asking that question. Thank you.
So I don't know if that gets, I mean, there's a lot more detail that I didn't necessarily get into this evening, because it's not as pertinent to the planning commission, but if you do have follow-up questions, I know.
I'm sure I will. I don't have a specific, you know, we're done with Career Center now, and that's going to continue as it has been, you know, with the joint effort with APS, so I think that'll kind of run that. But as we have other actions coming up, I'm sure I will have questions, just so we get this right, and everyone's in a good headspace. But that addresses my immediate question, so thank you.
Thank you.
And it's great that Commissioner Steinberger said that, because sometimes we have questions that we can also ask Mr. Fusarelli by email, correct, Mr. Fusarelli?
Absolutely.
We can always reach out to you. Commissioner Hughes.
I just want to remind my colleagues that when we get in the elevator, we're only allowed to talk about the weather, and we can never take off our hats as being a commissioner. And so even if we wanted to sit in a meeting publicly, if one of us shows up to a meeting that two of us are at, as a member of the public, we create a very uncomfortable conundrum. So trust your colleagues, listen after the fact, but try to avoid attending if two people are already there. That's my only comment.
Great. Any further questions or comments? Thank you so much, Mr. Fusarelli. We really appreciate you providing all these updates over and over and over again. And I'm sure we'll have continued conversation and questions, so stand by.
Thank you. And I know, I know we are actively still working on some other solutions to provide additional support, to make your roles and responsibilities as, to not create any additional, you know, excessive work beyond what we can help limit by way of tracking attendance and leveraging the information from the meeting summaries for individual purposes, for your own tracking. We will follow up on the information for how best to relay approvals and non-approvals for requests. So we will definitely be in touch.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, did we need to check with Commissioner Geren to see if she had any feedback?
Oh, yes, sorry, thank you. I've been so good about that. Sorry, Commissioner Geren.
It's fine. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. No comments, thanks.
Thank you so much. And also, Madam Click, I also just went ahead and called Mr. Fusarelli, and I didn't even check with you, so I apologize for, spoke out of turn. May, may we, I know, we're just going to move them right along. May we move on to number three? The PC reports and other business?
Sure, yeah, that's fine. Go ahead and approve the minutes.
Thank you. Okay, so has, everybody has received the September 7, 2022 meeting minutes? I am going to ask for unanimous consent for approval of those minutes. And it's okay, if you were not here, what Chair Weir has taught us is, we just don't say anything. I know. Okay, so seeing no objection, those meeting minutes are approved. Wonderful. Couple of other things. We have, I'm going to seek unanimous consent to approve the, actually, let me start here. Commissioner Peterson had sent over a SPRC report for everybody, and in that contained a notice that we need to approve two new subgroups for the SPRC rosters for Boston Macy's and Bingham Center Silver Diner sites, as well as approve the two amended subgroup SPRC rosters for Joyce Motors and the Boston Holiday Inn.
Before you see that.
Yes.
While Commissioner Peterson did in fact tell us that we needed to adopt those rosters, I don't know that her materials included the rosters.
Okay.
Ms. Badger, Ms. Johnson.
I have the rosters. Oh, wonderful.
Could you put them up on the screen, please? Maybe do unanimous consent one at a time?
Fantastic, thank you so much.
For the ones that are new, you can use, but the ones that are amended, you basically like you're asking unanimous consent. Approve a previously approved.
He's not wrong.
It's a previously approved roster. It's just that that word needs to be.
Okay. Okay, so when I get to it, just correct me if I say one.
Those two that are, I mean.
Yeah.
Just make this.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Wonderful, we're ready? Great, thank you. So we have the Bingham Center Silver Diner site on our computer monitors here. So I am going to seek unanimous consent to approve the new subgroup SPRC roster for the Bingham Center Silver Diner site. Any objection? Okay, seeing none, so moved. And then do we have the Boston Macy's? So I seek unanimous consent to approve the new subgroup SPRC roster for Boston Macy's. Any objection? Wonderful, so moved. And then I'm going to seek a motion for, from Commissioner Schroll on the amended subgroup SPRC roster. Commissioner Schroll.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I would move to ask unanimous consent to amend the previously approved roster for the Joyce Motors site plan to include updated members from the Climate Change, Energy and Environment Commission, Disability Advisory Commission, and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, as shown on the screen.
Thank you. Do I, do we have a second? No.
One second.
I asked unanimous consent.
Oh, I'm sorry, you asked, okay, any, thank you, thank you. Any objection? Okay, wonderful, seeing no objection. Okay, and then the last one, Commissioner Schroll, if you wouldn't mind helping yourself.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would ask unanimous consent to amend a previously approved roster for the 4600 Fairfax Drive, Boston Holiday Inn site plan roster to include members of the Pedestrian Advisory Committee and Boston Green Homeowners Association, as shown on the screen.
Any objection? Okay, seeing no objections, so they are all now approved. All right, moving right along to our next item, that is, actually, what's not on the agenda is Commissioner Weir and his legislative, his motion for legislative priorities.
So this is the long-fretted discussion on recommendations to the county board for inclusion in the county's legislative priorities. A couple of things, just high level, right, this is, there's a lot of filter, the language itself isn't, I think, so important as the, as the gist of the ideas that we're trying to signal, that we care about to the county, remembering that this has got to go through a lot of filters, not the last of which is the Legislative Affairs people, which actually are the ones that would do anything with them, and, you know, that's a whole different set of factors to consider. And with that being said, you know, these are on screen, but I'll just, the one that I want to note, and I think I might do it as a separate motion, just so that we don't get too confused, I think I want to do something separate to encourage authority to have members of commissions take leaves of absences for worthy purposes. I've got to give myself a minute to think that through. On the one hand, you know, the reason that it's not a thing that's done is because people don't take leaves of absences from boards of directors, that's not how it works. On the other hand, we don't have a fiduciary obligation, we are not the county board, we are not members of a board of directors, we have an obligation to the board, but we're in a very different category than the kind of parliamentary body, deliberative body, that someone might say, why are you asking if a member of the board can take a leave of absence? That's a stupid question, go away. I think that commissions are different, they are of a different character, and the kinds of things that the actual elected boards want from commissions are of a different nature. And so I don't mind asking the county board to give some thought to charging the Legislative Affairs staff with giving some thought to that. I know exactly where it's going to probably go, but I don't mind asking them to think about it.
So long as those taking leave of absence leave a quorum, an active quorum.
Well, that's the point, right, is that a leave of absence welcomes someone back to the body by operation of the rules themselves. But during their leave, right, the denominator goes down by one. So that's, but, but yes, that's, that's a good point, and I'll, that's the other reason I wanted to take these separately, so that we can have a conversation about what people have already sent to me, and I've tried to distill. And the only other thing that I'll make, point that I'll make, and thank you, Commissioner Ellen Tellme, the only other point that I'll make is that this is not my, like, the language reflects my way of drafting it, but these are ideas that have come from a number of you on, on the commission. You know, Commissioner Ellen Tellme, you might recognize one or two of yours here. I know Commissioner Peterson has a lot of these, I've got some of these. Commissioner Geren has been the source of some of these. And I said that was the last thing, but it's actually not the last thing. There's one change here. Number six is different than what I circulated earlier today. Number six, earlier today, I had said that it should be, the language that I said included was a little different. This just says that, this just is basically an endorsement of a letter that the Forestry and National Resources Commission sent earlier about, very broadly, deliberately so, tools for preventing canopy loss. I realize that I left one more out here, so I'm going to have two separate motions. We'll deal with these eight that are on the screen.
Could we add the removal of limits on speed cameras?
Yes, we'll do that, but we'll do those three separately, because I've only got so much screen space. Thank you.
Do you want to say something?
So Commissioner Weir, I appreciate all these, and as someone who, as you know, who takes the Commonwealth very seriously, all corners of the Commonwealth, that's the problem with a lot of these, and it's kind of the Arlington approach problem, I'm going to describe it that way, is we have to remember that Arlington, if we're not appropriate and deferential to our place in the Commonwealth, we create ourselves problems that we don't otherwise need to. And by that, I'll give you a very specific example, the prohibition on the school board's ability to have negotiations with a school, school teacher union, was the direct result of 40 years ago's decisions, or 30 years ago decisions, that the state legislature then chose to not only remove the privilege, but forbid the privilege. And so a lot of these things I generally agree with, but it's the approach, and I think we need to convey not only our hope that these things could change, but maybe ways we could try to do so in a way that respects the other parts of our community that have different priorities and decisions. And I can use many examples, the example we just talked about was the excuse of a fiduciary obligation to the county community for our planning responsibility. We do, it's embodied in state code, we're one of the few commissions that are stuck having to be in person for those reasons. And in most of the Commonwealth, the size of the planning commission is the exact same number of the county board members. So I just, I am so deferential to making sure that the request we have is something that we can achieve, because if we narrow our approach to achievable goals, we can find partners in the state. But if we just ask for everything we wish that the world had, we're going to end up with nothing more than them taking away privileges that we wish we still had. And that's the reaction that can be generated across the state, because I remember a tour of Barcroft with the Civic Association president, who was a friend of mine, and we showed me a dilapidated building, and I said, it's not nearly the most dilapidated building I've seen in the Commonwealth. And his point was, but it's terrible, see, when I go, yes, but a Virginia judge has the same rules here as he does somewhere else. And so I really do, I like a lot of these, but to the extent that we push the issue, we're going to be, we may end up getting less than more by asking for some things. That's my concern, so.
So thank you, Commissioner Hughes, I have two responses. The first is, please understand that my comment about the fiduciary obligation was highly contextualized within the context of the relationship of a member of a board of directors to a corporation within a, you know, within the body of corporate law, not within, not to say anything about our relationship to the community in general. Second, I think more substantively, please keep in mind that, you know, we, we're having this conversation in part because, because we, like all of the commissions, have been asked by the board to make any recommendations based on our bailiwick, our conversations and our experiences over the last year, to flag issues for their deliberation in the, as to the Legislative Affairs package, right? Our job here is only to speak to the issues that we have encountered and our thoughts about possible solutions to those issues. These broader conversations that, and concerns that you're talking about are well-placed, but I think that they are more well-placed with the county board than they are with us. Our charge is to surface the issues that we have come across. I don't, I don't, your philosophical concerns are well-received. I don't, I don't, your, your philosophical concerns are well-received. That's, I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, can I just, I'm going to jump in here, because I don't want to keep going in this back and forth. It looks like we're going to end up needing to have to vote on each individual one, because I don't know if we're going to be able to do this by one.
Just move the whole package.
Go ahead.
Move the whole package.
You want to move the whole package?
No reason to.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. If anyone, if anyone has one or two that they are concerned about, you know, a, a motion to, to break one or two of them out would be in order. I mean, that's a, that's a normal part of the deliberation. So I think we start with a motion on the whole package. I would move that, that the planning commission adopt these eight items as, as recommended topics for, recommended items for the, recommended items for the county's legislative agenda.
I have a clarification question.
Sure.
I just didn't get my hand up fast enough, I think. So with regards to item five, public bodies procluded by statute from conducting virtual meetings, allowing a virtual meeting, if, so long as no votes are going to be taken at that meeting, can you, I mean, usually we're, in, in the context, like, for planning commission, like, we're voting on something, whether we're approving minutes or anything, like, is there ever a meeting in which we're not voting at, on something?
Meetings of the SPRC, the LRPC, and the zoning committee are committees of the whole, and, and it's those non-subgroup meetings where it's just the one-off of the LRPC of the zoning committee. If we were to have a meeting of the SPRC for the purpose of giving feedback on a specific thing, like, like we did when it came to default site plan conditions, right, these would be meetings of the planning commission, meetings of the planning commission, meeting as a committee of the whole, where no, and, and it is an inherent element of meetings of committees of the whole that no votes are taken.
Okay, so that's what this number five is designed to get at. Okay, I just wanted to understand what it was targeting. Okay, thank you.
I heard Commissioner Sarley seconded, but I, but you're right that it was to the chair to recognize that.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so Commissioner Sarley seconded the motion. Is that right? I didn't hear it, actually.
I wasn't aware that I did, but I'm happy to do it.
So is, okay, sure. So Commissioner Weir has moved this bucket of recommendations. Is, is there a second on it? You did? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. All right, so Commissioner Sarley, now is there discussion on it? Commissioner Bagley, did you have anything to say? Sure.
Okay, maybe I've been off on Mars somewhere. It's a possibility. But I didn't get these until 5:17 this afternoon, and I didn't get out of my office until after 6:00. So this is kind of, you know, before this and just now. So I'm having a hard time. Number two, particularly as I think about the 3901 Fairfax, where there was money that was supposed to be given back because of the black box theater or something. I don't want that going on in the neighborhood. We fought really hard for that. There were a lot of bad feelings about that. So if this has any sort of effect on that, I can't support it. But again, getting it at 5:17 this afternoon, I, I don't feel necessarily schooled up enough on it to comment, but number two sticks out to me, and for that reason, if we vote on it as a, you know, a total thing, I'll have to abstain. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gieran had her hand up, and I think we couldn't see it because we have our screens like this, so I'd like to go to Commissioner Gieran.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question about the wording on number six. I feel like it's missing a word, and I, I think we need to get that right before we vote on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Gieran. I'm silent because I'm trying to remember what it was that I thought that I had in mind as I wrote this. What, do you, do you have a, what, what word is, Commissioner Gieran, do you think that, do you have a quick fix for us?
I do not, but I will take a look.
Commissioner Sarley.
I'm going to venture to answer Commissioner Bagley's concern on number two. I'm fairly sure that that's specific to public art only, and public art is a very defined, perhaps Mr. Fusorelli can help, it's a very defined context, so it would not apply to the black box theater.
That is, that is correct. I can confirm that. The, what, what transpired and what played out at 3901 Fairfax does not have any direct relationship to what is the subject of item two here.
So I'm just going to try to help kind of move this conversation a little bit. Can we, is there a way, does, do people feel comfortable, what's the appetite for kind of lumping a few of these together that are substance, like, they're in the same area, like trees, and then other things that are like meetings, to be able to kind of move this along and see what we feel comfortable as a planning commission to recommend, and where we have some abstention or no votes? How do we feel about that? Yes, Commissioner Steinberger? You just want it up or down?
I don't necessarily, in the land of sort of wishing one of these things is not like the others, I think eight is not like the others. Instead of like a, if our legislative priorities, everything else kind of reads as a, a specific action.
A specific action, like, an actual legislative action. Number eight is sort of like a sense of a commission, I, I feel like.
Like a recommendation.
What Commissioner Hughes stated before, in terms of where we could end up losing things that we already have, number eight really sets us up for that, and I'm just not really sure where that gets us. I would, I, I could support this list if we took eight out.
I, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't object to that. I, I don't remember the origin of that one particular bullet, and so I, I, my apologies to whichever of our colleagues had suggested that language, but I, I was not able to bring that to a more discreet.
I mean, I, I kind of think that our county board already does these things in, in effort, and maybe itemizing it out there in some sort of a list that we've all voted on just puts out there into the ether everything that Commissioner Hughes was basically saying we could just lose. I'm sorry, one more time?
I would seek unanimous, I would seek unanimous consent to strike number eight.
Any objection? Wonderful.
I would also seek unanimous consent regarding number six, to change the language to endorse the Forestry and Natural Resources Commission's recommendations dated August 1 concerning canopy coverage and authorities sufficient to stem the loss of our invaluable tree canopy. I think that's the language I was trying to use.
Any objection? Okay, so the language is amended. Okay, so we have the motion, we have a second. Are we ready to vote on this? Wonderful. Commissioner Weir.
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes.
Abstain.
Commissioner Gieran?
Aye.
Commissioner Lantome?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley?
Abstain.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
And Commissioner Patel abstains. Okay, did I, I didn't miss anyone? One, two, three, four, five, six, both ayes. So the motion carries, right? Yes, carries, thank you. Okay. Wonderful. So now we are moving on to just committee reports. Oops, you've got one more, sorry, you've got more.
Three more, actually, and I want to take these in order of, of, I think, least to most controversial. The first would be to add, I, I move to add to this list, grant author, grant local governments authorities to remove limits, to, to grant authorities, grant local governments authorities to reduce limits on the use of speed cameras.
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Hughes.
Would Commissioner Lantome and Commissioner Weir find language acceptable to allow localities the ability to set speed limits lower than 25?
I, I, that, I wouldn't consider that germane, but I wouldn't oppose it as an, as an, you know, I wanted to pose the substance of it. No, I would not oppose it.
The, the speed cameras are fundamentally a position of that lower speed should be the priority in an urban area, fundamentally. That's what you two are trying to get to, and it's the enforcement mechanism of it. But the first step is kind of, why no one speeds down seven in Falls Church? Because everybody knows you will get a ticket pretty quickly if you do. So that's why nobody goes more than 25 down Falls Church about seven. So many places in Arlington, we can't even set the speed limit down to 25 miles per hour. And so I would also like to add to that, seek unanimous consent, that in addition to the speed camera flexibility, local jurisdictions be allowed, or urban local jurisdictions be allowed to set speed limits at least as low as 25 on all roads. And seek unanimous consent to add that language. Any?
Any objection?
Not an objection, just a question. Is that language available, just so we can see it?
I, I made it up clerically on behalf of Commissioner Hughes, grant local governments authorities to reduce speed limits to as low as 25 miles per hour and to use speed cameras.
I'll stick with 25, because I know what the legislature might be able to tolerate. Under 25 is a bigger deal.
Commissioner Weir, can you read it one more time?
Grant local, local governments authorities to reduce speed limits to as low as 25 miles per hour and to use speed cameras.
Okay, so I'm just going to say this, because I feel, I feel like this is nostalgic for where we were once, when Commissioner Steinberger said, this is kind of happening a little bit too much in the dark for me. And so I am going to abstain from this motion, because I don't feel that we have enough information on it, number one. Number two, I remember the issues of speed cameras coming up in, in the context of Police Practices Group, and there was a lot of conversation around equity concerns and other issues that come up in that space. So politely, I will abstain. Maybe if forced to take further action, I would probably oppose it, just because, again, I don't have enough information to be intelligently deciding on this issue. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
No, the only reason I was raising it, because I felt that speed cameras are inherently more equitable than having police enforcement, in the sense that anybody going by, it, it doesn't matter who's doing it, it's the car that goes, it's the vehicle, it's not who's driving it that gets, gets caught by it. And there is not the discretion that the police would otherwise have to either choose to, to stop someone or to let them go, once they did. The speed camera takes the picture, and it's the license plate that's, that's, that's done. It also gives information that's easy enough that if there does emerge inequalities, the data's there that it's pretty easy then to identify where the problems are and then, then address it, compared to police enforcement.
I'm just going to respectfully decline.
Yeah, I was just giving my, my, my thinking on it, and why I felt that this was actually an improvement over existing speed enforcement. And it works. As I mentioned earlier during the, during the meeting, the experience I've seen from the District of Columbia's use of speed cameras is, is quite dramatic.
I, I don't disagree with you, Commissioner Lantome, and I, I am obviously not going to, I'm, I'm not the, I'm not a person on this commission that likes to do a lot of back and forth, but having experience in that space in District of Columbia, there's a, it's, it's ripe with a lot of issues. So anyways, let's go ahead and vote on this. Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes?
Aye.
Commissioner Gieran?
Aye.
Commissioner Lantome?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Abstain.
Commissioner Bagley?
Abstain.
Commissioner Sarley?
No.
Commissioner Patel's going to go with no as well. So we have one, two, three, four, five. Where are we on that? That's a pass as well. Okay. How many? Five, yes, five, two. All right, next one.
The next one is to, I, I move to include among the legislative package, recommendation that the Commonwealth authorize members of county-appointed advisory commissions, including planning commissions, to take medical leaves of absence, such as parental leave or other longer-term leave consistent with FMLA that allows for the automatic return of the commissioner to the body, and allows that commissioner to not be counted for the purpose of determining a quorum.
Any second. Okay, that's Commissioner Schroll. Is there any need for discussion on this? Great, let's go down the roll. Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes?
No.
Commissioner Gieran?
Aye.
Commissioner Lantome?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel, aye. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. It passes. Eight votes to one. Next.
The last one is to, this one, I'm going to, I don't necessarily know that everyone's going to agree with this, and I agree with, and I acknowledge preliminarily, preemptively acknowledge Commissioner Bagley's concerns about the, the late nature of the distribution, that's on me, but I'm still going to suggest it, and if I'm outvoted, I'm outvoted. But that, that the Commonwealth adopt changes to the building code to re-permit, and I can say more about that in a moment, the use of single stairways for smaller floor-plate multifamily apartment buildings up to six stories.
Any second.
Commissioner Weir, repeat that, please?
That the Commonwealth adopt changes to the building code to re-permit, that's re-dash-permit, because it used to be allowed, the use of single stairways for smaller floor-plate multifamily apartment buildings up to six stories.
Is there a second? Okay.
I have a clarifying question, Madam Chair, which is, is that not in the base motion as number seven?
I thought it was.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, wonderful. Fantastic.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Chairman's motion fails for lack of a second, but it's in the base motion.
Thank you.
I think I withdrew it before it failed for lack of a second. I, I beat the chair to that.
Okay, we're going to move on. Committee reports. We've got, we've taken care of Commissioner Peterson's Site Plan Review Committee.
Have, did we?
Yes.
This passed.
Okay. Is there an LRPC committee report? LRPC?
There is. LRPC. We have, as you, you all saw the earlier emails sent around, that the LRPC for the 11th has been canceled. There will be an LRPC on the 17th for Missing Middle, and I'm so looking forward to that. Oh, my goodness. The 19th, there'll be a joint LRPC for both the Chesapeake Bay Plan and the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan Updates to the Comprehensive Plan. Both of those items will be considered at that one meeting. And then on the 25th, there'll be an LRPC for Plan Langston Boulevard, that will be an update, and Commissioner Schroll has graciously consented to, to lead that effort. In November, we have a couple coming up that are only tentative, so you don't necessarily have to put it on your calendar quite yet, but be aware that these are coming up. 2500 Wilson Boulevard, a special glove study, tier one special glove study, that's the property next door to the Courthouse West that we've already considered. That will have to have a subgroup. And then the LRPC, there'll be an LRPC on the 22nd or the 29th, and that'll be the Sunrise Assistant Living. You may remember there already, we've had one meeting on that, and again, Commissioner Schroll is chairing that. There will also have to be a subgroup that we'll have to adopt from that. And in December, we're looking to have the LRPC for the Sanitary Sewer Master Plan. You know, that's, again, tentative, but that's one that was been tentative since over a year ago, so maybe we'll actually have it this time. Try not to be too snarky. I'm sorry. Anyway, that's what's coming up for the LRPCs. Thank you all, and I do look forward to seeing people at these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you so much. How about Soko, Commissioner Sarley?
So perhaps the chair and the vice chair have more pertinent information than I do? So perhaps the chair and the vice chair have more pertinent information than I do. We had a couple meetings scheduled for October, but I think they're off the docket, and I'm sort of waiting to hear what's going to happen and when it's going to happen in November regarding the Missing Middle, Zoco.
Me too.
So that's my report.
Fantastic. How about PFRC?
That's me.
Yes.
Career Center is proceeding. Commissioner Peterson stepped in very ably for me while I was on maternity leave, so I've been coordinating with her on the meetings that she chaired for, on behalf of Planning Commission for LRPC while I wasn't available. We have a letter that we're reviewing now that will go to the school board ahead of our presentation to them. I will be presenting to the school board on October 13th, at which point the school board will make some decisions on how they're going to be moving forward, and then there may be some additional Career Center meetings after that, but at this point, that's sort of what's happening Career Center-wise for PFRC.
Thank you so much.
That's what we have. Thank you.
And Aug.
Thank you, Vice Chair. For FBC, we don't have anything urgent on the current docket, but there is the Bank of America site project that will, or Bank of America property, which you've already heard us in a minute for, and the implications with the, I forget the building's name at this point, but the Macy's Ballston Site Plan is connected to a Form-based Code project, possibly.
Okay, so we are done with everything on the agenda. I just want to make note that this matter is going to come before the county board on October 15th. We will be well-represented by Commissioner Hughes at that meeting, and seeing that there's nothing, Ms., Madam Clerk.
Did I hear you guys vote on minutes?
Yes.
You did?
We did. We're moving too fast tonight.
You must have.
Too fast.
Thank you.
Okay, so seeing nothing else, there's no further business, this commission stands adjourned. Thank you.
But?
But, wait, we don't, we do stand adjourned. We can do this off the record, right?
Yep. Once upon a time, we would have had gift baskets. We're trying to get back there, and food, but to Stephen and Sarah, congratulations.